Katie, where we're going to be present. Although I don't see them in the crowd yet, Greater Portland Inc. and their representative, Mayor Lou Ogden from Tuolleton, are going to present tonight.
Oh, he's not here.
I don't see the mayor here.
The mayor's not here yet.
Yeah, but he'll be here, okay. So, we're going to do that just before the Natural Resources Committee update, assuming the mayor gets here in time. So with that, I will call the regular session of the City Commission of Oregon City to order for Wednesday, August 5th, 2015. Roll call.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Polly.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Here. If you'll all join, stand and join me in the flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, I guess the mayor will have to wait since we're not going to slow the... Oh, we can do this first. We have one presentation tonight, and since we don't have them, do we have a handheld microphone? If I have difficulty, please stand by. Mr. Fraser.
Could you come up here, please?
I'm a kind of troll.
It's not pink. That's a good sign. So, at a meeting, I think it was last week, the city handed out their service awards. And given that I didn't like the form that Mr. Fraser's certificate was in, we had to reproduce that. So, it's certificate of service and recognition of your five years of service to the City of Oregon City. The city here would, is pleased to present David Fraser, City Manager's Certificate of Honor of your dedication to the citizens and community of Oregon City dated this first day of June 2015 by the mayor and commission of Oregon City, signed by all of us.
So, since we are still missing Mayor Tuolleton, we will proceed with the Oregon City Natural Resources Committee update, Community Development Director Tony Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. I'd like to call up Ginger Redlinger to make a presentation and an update from the Natural Resources Committee.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Is it this on?
Red light.
Yeah, okay. Mayor and Commissioners, it's good to see you.
Cool.
Thank you for giving us time on your agenda. I'll be brief, but thorough. As you know, we exist by statute, and our goal in the Natural Resources Committee is to serve the city, improve the livability, make sure that the citizens value the resources that are available. And we want you to know through our bylaws, if you look very carefully towards the end, our number-one goal is to work in partnership with the city in order to help it achieve its goals. We have some goals and some activities that we would like to continue to pursue that will help us coordinate and collaborate better with different agencies or departments within the city, and do outreach and improve citizen engagement focused on improving and understanding and learning about the natural resources that are here. So, we are here to serve, and we look forward to working with departments and with the city. We're very happy with the work that Tony and Pete Walter have done with us so far. So, thank you for your support, and if you have any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Would just compliment you on your work and your volunteerism for this committee. And I didn't know what certain projects you have going on or things that are happening. Can you divulge what projects you have going on there?
Currently, what we've been engaged in is looking at ways in which to support the projects and development that the city is pursuing right now. We're very excited about the Riverfront Project and the Blue Heron Project, the New Oak Creek Canyon. We've done some reviews for that and support.
And that's what it's doing, okay.
The Greater Watershed Council as well, Johns Keep, Ennskeep Environmental Center, some work there, Arbor Day Projects, the work at Eastham Community Center, helping plant trees. We've supported that. So, those are some activities that we're currently involved in.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Real quick before, Ginger Dudley, if I could have the other members from the Natural Resources Committee that are here tonight, maybe they could just stand and we could acknowledge them.
Jerry Herman, Richard Craven, and Doug Neely.
Okay, so now, Mayor Lou Ogden, my friend, and Greater Portland Inc., who are going to give us a presentation, and I believe your PowerPoint is on the machine, ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor Holliday and members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Lou Ogden, and I have the honor to serve as Mayor of the City of Tuolleton, but I'm also in a different role tonight, serving as your connection, if you will, to Greater Portland Inc. And I'd like to take just a couple of minutes with your indulgence and give you a little bit of the background. And Renata, you switched hats on me. You can go to sleep and tune out, she's heard this before. A little bit of background that you're probably aware of, but I'll try to be brief and just kind of give the context. For years, the professionals at the municipalities, that is, our economic development directors and planning directors, whoever was designated, participated in an organization called Regional Partners. And the role of Regional Partners was for those of us in local government to sort of collaborate, city to city and with the counties, on economic development for the region, economic development strategy, economic development promotion, and the smart folks that work for you and I collaborating together on that as a working entity. Not too many years later, the private sector, led predominantly by folks in the Portland Business Section, realized that they needed to be involved in this as well. And so, through their good efforts, they formed an organization called Greenlight Greater Portland. And it wasn't too long after that that the two entities realized that, goodness sakes, the public sector is doing this work collaboratively and with their technical expertise. The private sector has this interest in growing the region and marketing the region, and why don't we combine forces and have a true public-private partnership? And so was born Greater Portland Inc., and I want to say, two or maybe three years ago. That was the good news. Part of, and the role of Greater Portland Inc. was, and still is, not to set the policy for economic development. That's the role of the elected officials of all the governments that work together, but to really be the smart people to work with the economic development directors and professionals, both at the municipal and county level and at the private sector, to market the region and present the region to the rest of the nation, site selectors, growing businesses, and frankly, to the world. And so with that charge, Greater Portland Inc. was born. To fund that, the mechanism for doing so was that of board investors. So, in other words, to be on the board of directors, you would be an investor in Greater Portland Inc., and that was at a fairly sizable price tag, as I want to recall, like $25,000. And so, the major, the two or three major largest cities, Hillsborough, Beaverton, Gresham, and Portland, I guess that's four, ponied up, as did all three counties, Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington. Little old Tuolleton, who was participating in the Regional Partners, basically just for the cost of our economic development director's time, didn't really have the budget to write that kind of a check, and likewise, most of the other small cities didn't either. So, to facilitate the role of small cities, which individually, frankly, I would say are as important as any of the large cities, and certainly collectively are more than any of the large cities singularly, was formed the Small Cities Consortium. So, there are, there were initially 11, I think there's now 19 or maybe 20 of the cities throughout the region that participate as the Small Cities Consortium. We pay a per capita, and I think it's in the neighborhood of $10 a head or maybe $2,500, which is a bargain because we're buying, obviously, the entire expertise of Greater Portland Inc., and more importantly, we're buying the presence that they have across the nation. The Small Cities Consortium meets monthly. I have the honor to be the board representative for those small cities, as the mayor of Tuolleton being in the same role that Mayor Holliday and the rest of us are in that Small Cities Consortium. So, Eric Underwood, from your staff, meets not only with the Small Cities Consortium that the electeds do once a month, but with the staff meetings that Renata participates in as a professional from Canby and the rest of the small cities. And so, that's sort of how we got where we are, and I got to tell you that it has been very positive from my standpoint in terms of all of the cities coming together and creating sort of the mosaic that is the economic fabric of the whole region, but Greater Portland Inc. is in a position to market that region, but to help site selectors and business expansion and exploration drill down a little bit deeper to find out what's unique about Oregon City, or what's unique about Westland, or Troutdale, or whatever, as it relates to the individual needs of those growing businesses and those site selectors. So with that, I'd like to introduce Sheila McRitchie, who is the Vice President of Marketing and Communications, I believe, and she will lead you through the actual material that brings us here tonight. And just again, thanks for your participation and the role that Oregon City plays as being a leader, not just among the small cities, but in the region, obviously, the first city in the state, but the city that is also, you know, moving forward with a lot of great cutting-edge work and what could happen with the Blue Heron, et cetera, so.
I just have one question. Can you give me one concrete example of what Greater Portland Inc. and the Small Cities Consortium has done for Tuolleton?
Most certainly. Several things. One, Tuolleton, like Oregon City, has posted on their website the community profile, and so when site selectors are looking at the region and they're following either the app that Greater Portland has developed, or the advertising that might be in a airline magazine, or they presented on Wall Street in New York, and so they have that presence of Portland, but then they can drill down through that website and see the profile of Oregon City or Tuolleton or whatever. Secondly, you know, we, I, I, like I'm sure all of you, know most of the businesses in Tuolleton, at least the major ones. And when we have large businesses that are looking to grow and expand, to know that they've got the ability of Greater Portland's kind of wide viewpoint to even tell them what's available in Phoenix, or in Austin, or Boston, or whatever, and compare that to what they have in Tuolleton, Oregon City, that gives them firsthand working knowledge that saves them some of that shopping. And so, you know, obviously, you want to grow what you have first before we look at trying to lure new ones. And then, we have sites in Tuolleton, and I know you do in Oregon City, that are yet to be filled. And so, Greater Portland has a pipeline, and Sheila can tell you the number, but I think there are 40 or 50 prospects that are looking at this region, some of those more intently than others, and actually, some have landed. I got to tell you, if a big business or a small business lands in Oregon City, I don't get to assess value of that in Tuolleton, right? But the folks who live in Tuolleton have the employment opportunity of that employer in Oregon City, number one. Number two, lifting the economic region provides more wealth in Oregon City for people to come to Tuolleton to shop or to participate. So, we really are inextricably linked, both financially, economically, and from a quality-of-life standpoint.
Thanks.
All right. I have some more examples, too, in the presentation, that we'll talk a little bit about specific marketing efforts that could benefit Oregon City. So, I'm going to give you a different sort of background on GPI in the sense of what we're working on right now, kind of how we put things together, that we have a strategic plan, we're not necessarily doing these things willy-nilly, that there are planning in the background, going on in the background. One of the things I do want to talk about is thinking about this place as a region, that there's a benefit to selling the Greater Portland region as a region. When site selectors are interested in coming to or looking at sites, they don't necessarily think about borders or geographic separation. They think about what's the talent, what's the opportunity, what are the businesses that are already there, what's, you know, really, what's the workforce and the talent going to be like, and am I going to be able to fill the positions that I need to? So, that's why we come at this from a regional perspective. That's what that is. Our 2015 work plan focuses on three areas, which is uniting regionally to compete globally, so we talked a little bit about that. Stay and Grow in Greater Portland, so those are using tools that support local community partners in their ongoing efforts. Choose Greater Portland, so that's more of the recruitment efforts, so we do go out and try and recruit. GPI specifically is one of the organizations that's trying to recruit companies to come and move into the region. So, I'm going to buzz through these because I really think you guys are more interested in the marketing efforts that are going on, but these give a little bit of the details of what we're working on for each effort. The services that we provide and that you would be interested in, I think, as a city, are business development, marketing, research and analysis, connectivity, and regional competitiveness. Those are all the things that we are able to offer to clients, which we consider you guys a client. Business development, we focus on the sectors that are focused on for the state, so metals and machinery, clean tech, athletic and outdoor, computer and electronics, software media, health science and technology. So, we have these processes that we use to come up with marketing efforts, the total projects that we are able to identify through all different sources of leads, through advertising that we do. We put these through the funnel, and they come out at the other end, and ultimately, we hope that they're regional wins. So, that's from 2014. Those are the four wins that we have, and overall, seven regional wins. There's a little bit of a breakdown, projects by industry, those are the, where you're looking at the total projects, those are the 47, and we just have them broken out, and then the wins. So, this is the stuff I want to talk to you about. This is kind of my area of expertise, anyway. For marketing, a lot of efforts have taken place this year in particular with the digital media. So, there are software tools and resources that we have, and we've just, this year, in May, we started using an application called Prospect ID, Y Factor, and that is a program that's on the back end. So, anybody that visits the GPI website, which sometimes is the very first place, somebody who might be interested in coming to the region, that's the first place they might end up through search on Google, et cetera. So, we have the access now or the ability to track exactly who's coming to our webpage. It's really sort of fascinating and creepy all at the same time, but through those leads or through those people, we take them through, kind of go through a process of identifying, like what's their funding, what's their, are they serious, are they a company that would really be interested in relocating or expanding, and then we take that through kind of a assessment. And then, we follow up with them through another marketing effort, so we reach out directly to them. That's what's going on on our website. The top one is an ad. That's just a sample of an ad that we've used on LinkedIn, so it's another effort that we've undertaken. Some of this is a process of learning, but through LinkedIn, we've gotten probably approximately 90 or so potential leads from people who have clicked on that ad. So, if you, if you use LinkedIn and you see, you probably won't see our ads because we specifically target regional, like San Jose, or Austin, or areas that we would be interested in trying to recruit companies from. So, you guys probably won't see them, but if somebody in that area clicks on that ad, then we have, because they came to our website, now we know who they are and we can directly follow up with them. Mayor Ogden talked about the community profiles, so we have the City of Canby there as an example. That's a community profile that we put together. It's a template that we send to you guys. You fill it out with specific details and data and information, and kind of highlight the region, what you have to offer. So, if a site selector came to the GPI website, we have a map, they can click on the map, it pops that profile, and it provides them some insight into your specific community. And then, another, the one on the right, on the far right, it's called Location Essentials. That is a newsletter that we send out to specific, we have a list of approximately 500 site selectors. And so, every quarter, we send out a very targeted and specific overview of an area. So, this one, for example, was targeted for the Bioscience Region in South Waterfront. So, we send this out. If people click on it, we know exactly who they are, and that's another opportunity for us to follow up. So, we assume if it's a site selector, they might have some interest in the region or the area, and it's a great opportunity for us to follow up with them directly. So, those are some of the marketing efforts, and I think, you know, in addition to what Mayor Ogden spoke of, these are some additional efforts that are ongoing for marketing this place larger, which I always say I have, you know, kind of the coolest job around. I get to really market this place. So, research and analysis, these are opportunities that if you have a client in mind, or you have a site selector in mind, and you need some additional support with research and analysis, this is something that Matt Miller in our office is able to provide. This is just a sample report that he could help you run, so keep that in mind, and please reach out to us if there is a client and you need some additional support, or maybe just brainstorming on or talking through what he, what they think, what you think a client might need or want, or some numbers that might help boost a story that you're trying to pitch. Connectivity, so some of the stuff that we do is coordinating with our partners and doing tours. I was lucky enough to go on the Blue Heron tour. Gosh, it's probably been about two months ago or so. So, what a great, great, it's really a great project, so kudos to you guys. And other tours that we've done have been Intel, Nike, and then the one in the middle is the OHU, the Collaborative Life Sciences Building Down in South Waterfront, which is, was really, if you ever have an opportunity to take that tour, I highly recommend it. We had, it's another one that we could put together if there's interest. Regional competitiveness, so foreign direct investment is, or the Greater Portland Global is a foreign direct investment plan that really focuses on bringing foreign investment into the region, and it focuses on the sectors that we talked about earlier. And they've gone to great lengths in research and figuring out which industries are those that are well-established, those that are nascent, and those that are kind of fading out, and trying to prioritize and making sure that when we're talking to potential foreign direct investors, that we're giving them kind of the best picture. Greater Portland 2020 is a five-year tactical action plan that's in play right now. It launched last year at our economic summit, and that, over the course of the past year, and Lou's been involved in this, they've been doing research on how, as a region, can we make sure that we're able to compete in 2020, and as far as recruitment, not only for businesses, but for talent, and overall, just making this a stronger region competitively. And that's it? Kind of blew through that, I was trying to get, I really wanted to tell you, if you have any questions about marketing and the value, I've actually met with Katie to talk a little bit about their website in Canby and provided some support. I had the pleasure of, is there a baseball game on? You know, no matter how hard you try. It's the side of the times. I was able to participate with Eric Underwood at the Beaver Creek Planning Visioning Sessions, and so those are some of the opportunities that I've had to participate in some of the things that are going on within Oregon City, within Cockamis County. So, again, happy to answer any questions regarding marketing.
Anybody?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask that. How has Oregon City worked with you, and what tools have we used? GPI tools have we used?
I think we're developing a better connection to Oregon City. I came to GPI in September of last year, and I know that the community profiles were one of the things that the small cities really wanted to get taken care of. They've been talked about for a while, and so that was one of our first steps to getting those completed and in play. And then through that, over the course of that time, I just started to meet people and reach out and build relationships, and so I think it's just kind of starting to grow as far as what we're able to do.
Great, yeah, I was at the presentation this morning, as was Renata. So, we've seen all this, and I think it's great to think of it as regional, regionally. I think that's really, really important, just working together and see what we can do. Like you said, we all benefit from it. We may not, you know, directly, we mean other ways, but it's important that our neighbors are successful, too, and that we work together and pool our resources, so.
Yeah, I think there's a healthy competitiveness that goes on. Of course, everybody wants the business to become their community, but ultimately, yeah.
I'm still holding Cabello's against you.
Mayor Commissioner Polly, part of, or I would say not part of, parcel to the role of the Small Cities Consortium is to have, on a monthly basis, that interaction between your staff, and then those of you of the elected who want to participate, it's open to everybody, with the GPI staff so that we, so they have a better understanding of what we as individual cities want and need. And our needs in Tuolleton are different than Oregon cities, which are different than Happy Valleys, which are different than Tigards, but collectively, we have a lot of commonalities. So, the role of the Small Cities Consortium is for us to best communicate to them what our expectations are. I mean, why are we part of this consortium? Why are we part of GPI? And to the mayor's question, what specifically can we expect to get out of that? And then, their role is to sort of supply that back and have that constant communication. So, we have to ask them what they're doing, so we know what they're doing, to tell them what they want, and then we work together to accomplish that. That's not an overnight thing. It's an ongoing situation. And frankly, GPI has been in a ramp-up for, you know, 24 months. You know, Rome wasn't built today. So, Greater Portland isn't launched necessarily just in one fiscal year.
Anybody else?
I can't say enough about the great work GPI is doing and the value that you add to the region, and I'm glad you're marketing on our behalf. It's at a level of sophistication and a reach that no community could accomplish on their own, so I really appreciate what you do.
Every other region is doing it, so to be competitive, we got to be in the game.
That's right.
Well, I want to thank you, Mayor Ogden. I've known you for 20 years, I think, if not more, and your longtime public service, not only as mayor of Tuolleton, but in these other roles, is essential to us moving forward. So, thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks. Okay, so, next up is citizen comments, but before we do citizen comments, I'm going to make a comment of my own, and that is, I have gotten, I don't know, somewhere 10, 12 emails about this, what park is it? Scott, Fern?
Filbert Run.
Filbert Run. And apparently, I've been painted as the bag guy who's going to, you know, put 50 parking spaces in at Filbert Run. Well, I want to be clear that that was never an intent, and while we did have a discussion about maybe putting some auxiliary parking there, the master plan has not changed, and the City Commission has not moved to approve that master plan yet. I think it's coming up, but there is no, there is no intent to do anything different with the parking at Filbert Run that was in the, that was in the master plan. So, I just wanted to get that out there and get ahead of it before anybody else. I will answer those individual emails that I got, but, so, that's it. So, for citizen comment, do we have? So, my problem is, is that for some reason, my screen, I only have half of the screen.
Okay, well, Jay Pearce is first.
Okay, and then Bob LaSalle.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak here today, and I thank the commission for taking the time to listen to the comments that I've made. I've come before you today to bring my concerns about a couple of the commission goals that have already been stated about economic development and livability within Oregon City. have already been stated about economic development and livability within Oregon City. And I know that there's always been a struggle between growth and expansion and preservation, but at the heart of that matter is the intent for Oregon City to regain the prominence in both the history of the state and nationally. I think we've already seen the presentation here today. We're all on that path, and I'm on that path as well. I've observed the recent state heritage designation ceremonies and been following it, and applaud everything that's being done to invigorate downtown, and particularly the McLaughlin Historic District, in which I'm a resident, at 1214 Washington Street. Many qualified people in the past, at many levels of this government and the people who serve it, have been trying hard to realize this potential. And I know that we're the seat of the county, and that there's diverse functional needs for what we're trying to do here, or what you are trying to do in Oregon City. My family just received the Powers Memorial Preservation Award for the work we did on the Babcock House down on Washington Street. So I'm as committed as you are to what's happening here in Oregon City. But in my view, there are significant obstacles to the quality of life here, and I feel the need to speak up. I don't pretend or have a pretense about speaking for my neighbors. However, I know all my neighbors. I know everybody within two blocks of where I am and further out. I make that a mandate of my own, that I participated, what's going on in my neighborhood. And while sympathetic with the mission and goals of the Father's Heart Service Facility on Washington Street or on 12th Street, and the good intentions of city leaders, past and present, some of whom are here tonight, I don't believe the city can move forward until the problem of social service delivery and parole supervision are resolved. We've had, myself, my wife, my family, we've had a direct relationship with the director of Father's Heart, Terry Gaul. We've been, it's been evolving over the years. We've been cooperative. I see her on a regular basis, some good, some bad interactions, but it's always been on a cooperative basis, and a civilized basis, shall we say. However, criminal activity is constant and increasing at that site. I bought the property, knowing full well what I was moving in next door to. However, I must admit, I'm not naive, but I must admit to some misunderstanding of the scope of what's going on, yes.
I apologize, but we try to follow the rules fairly strictly here, and I've already let you go over by about 30 seconds.
All right.
Let me say that, that I think everybody on the commission not only understands what you're talking about, but we're looking to find a way to resolve the situation.
That's all I was trying to point out here today. We should not be afraid in our own home, and there've been many incidents where we've been locked in our house.
I lived just a few blocks from there, so I completely get.
And I applaud the police's response to what we do. They've been nothing but cooperative, but I think if you look at our record of 911 calls, non-emergency, police dispatch, code enforcement, we've been involved, and I've been quite tolerant, but it's the criminal side of things beginning to really be a problem.
It's definitely on our radar screen.
All right, well, I know that I'm probably preaching to the choir, so to speak, but I don't think enough citizens will sit in this chair and speak up, and that's what I wanted to do.
Thanks, sir. Mr. LaSalle?
I have a handout I'd like.
Sure. Seems to be we're having battery issues all around tonight.
I'll claim my time, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner McGee, and Bob LaSalle, from Oregon City, and I'll claim my five minutes as a representative chair of a neighborhood association, and some of what I have to talk about involves that. My first concern is whatever happened to the city website for the listing of the boards and commissions meetings. Meetings used to be all in order by date. As you can see by these handouts that I've given you, they're all mixed up. They used to start at the bottom with the first meeting in January, and then end at the top with the last meeting in December. And I think, Mayor, you can appreciate this. I'm a retired licensed electrician. I like to have everything in order, and if it's not in order, you can end up with short circuits and people getting hurt. And I think something's short-circuited in this mess, so whatever it takes, I think it should be corrected. There's an item on tonight's consent agenda that I'd like to address, and it's item 8A, Resolution 15-25 Adjustment to the 2015-17 Biennial Budget in Regards to a New Management Level. Person seems to be somewhat hidden in a budget change, but, and I look forward to this position. I'd just like to know more about it. We can't afford another police officer, and we can't afford a code enforcement officer, but we can afford a new city position of a government relations manager, which seems like a pretty vague title. But I haven't been able to find anywhere in any meetings that this has been discussed or referenced to, or anything about what the person is supposed to do. Assuming that, as a neighborhood association chair, that person would be working with me closely and the other neighborhood chairs to, as it states here, develop communication tools to keep citizens informed about important city projects. I'd like to see more questions offered, and also, is there a template of some kind from another city that has this position? Do we have any examples of what this position would really be doing? Because it looks like it's a pretty well-paid position. $276,000 for the biennium for that position. I'd like to hope that it would assume the positions of a volunteer coordinator, which has been brought up several times over the years in several meetings in the CIC and commission meetings, and you name it, it's been brought up, but it's a very desirable position. And I can see that this can be a very, very valuable position in certain areas of the city, many areas of the city, but I'm just kind of disappointed in the manner it was brought forward. It seems like it was kind of hidden. It may not, it probably wasn't meant to be, but that's what it appears to be. And I'd like to see more conversation about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Well, we can certainly pull that off, have a quick conversation off the consent agenda, I'm fine with that. I do want to point out that I could have sworn that there were more than one adjustment in that budget adjustment. One of those included a police officer, is that not right?
No, I don't think so.
I thought we.
A traffic officer?
I thought we were adding.
That's already been approved.
Oh, so it's already been approved. So we added a police officer in a consent agenda item, just like this, within the last month or so. So next, Jesse Buss. Is that it, Katie?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, good evening. Actually, I'll pass these out. I think I have enough for commissioners, one for the city recorder, and one for Mr. Kabeizman. I'll just hand these to you.
Thank you.
There's two handouts. If there are any kind of stack. First of all, this doesn't relate to what I was planning on talking about, but I think this is my first opportunity in front of the full commission to say thank you for passing the new ordinance, and thank you to most of the people sitting in front here, including Chief Band, the city manager, Deb Fraser, and Mr. Kabeizman, as well as some other folks. But as to.
So did it resolve your issue?
The issue resolved of its own accord right around the same time.
Okay.
So that will inure to someone else's benefit, but not mine, but thank you. So, but for the topic tonight, it's another consent agenda item. It's 8D15/432, that's the personal services agreement with DECA Architecture. I'm here as a resident of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association and a member of the stirring committee authorized by unanimous vote of the stirring committee to give this short presentation. So what you have before you are two things. On the top is a copy of Chapter 10 of the city charter with a few things highlighted, and the maps are two different comprehensive plan maps, one from 1975, at the top I've labeled it, and the second one from 2004. So I'll start by reading the highlighted text here. This is again from Chapter 10, Parks and National Beauty of the City Charter. Section 41 says that "The commission may not do any of the following listed acts with regard to any designated city park or part thereof without first obtaining approval of the legal voters of the city. Said acts are as follows," and I'll skip down to B, "vacate or otherwise change the legal status of any park, and C, construct permanent buildings or structures thereon other than for, you know, trails and other park purposes." And it goes on to describe the parks that were listed when this charter amendment went through in 1970, and then on the second page, in the highlighted text, it says "additional parks." And in the highlighted section, it says, "Real property owned or required by the city in other manners," meaning not by gift or other acquisition, "may be designated as parks by ordinance." So now going over to the maps. The comprehensive plan map from 1975 is on file here. It looks like it's the only comprehensive plan map from the 70s that survived. And if you look at the waterboard park area, and I think everyone that has a copy knows where that is, it shows all of waterboard park, including the upper and lower yard, as designated as parks, schools, and recreation. And then skipping to 2004, it's mostly green except for a part where the armory is and surrounding areas. The reason I presented these two comprehensive maps to you are because there are a couple examples of maps throughout the past 40 years that have designated an entire area as a park. So when you combine that, these maps and their designated areas, with the text that I just read, you get designated park areas subject to the protections of Chapter 10. So before you authorize nearly $100,000 in additional surveying and analysis of this site, the Neighborhood Association in McLaughlin would request that you remove the site of not only from the consent agenda, but table it until there can be a full explanation of how and when these parks were ever removed properly from park status with a citywide vote, which I don't believe has ever been done. It should, at the very least, be up for public discussion, and while we're talking about finances, it seems like the prudent thing to do to at least wait a little bit while this is analyzed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So that's all the public comment. Nobody else out there wants to talk? Okay. Move on to adoption of the agenda. Everybody's fine. We're going to pull off item AA off the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then we'll move ahead. Public hearings. 15-438, second reading of ordinance, 15-1007, vacating a section of Haven Road beginning at the intersection of Leland Road and extending southeastward. I will, is there, Mr. Lewis, you have anything to say?
Not much, other than this is the second reading, it's been before you, before I can go through as much detail as you'd like, but.
I don't need any, you guys. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody signed up to talk? Anybody want to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. I second that.
Okay, so have motion in second for the second reading of ordinance, 15-1007, moved by Commissioner Mengeleberg, seconded by Commissioner Polly. Mr. Kabeizman.
Ordinance number 15-1007, an ordinance vacating a section of Haven Road beginning at the intersection of Leland Road and extending southeastward, all within the Leland-Haven subdivision, Platte, Platte number 815, Clackamas County, City of Oregon, City of Oregon.
Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. Next item, general business, 15-431, request proceeded construction and approval of the guaranteed maximum price for the library expansion project. Marine Cole, library director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. I'm happy to be at this point of the project, where I have come before you tonight to ask you to approve our guaranteed maximum price and approval to move forward with construction. I believe everything is lined up. I've given you the documentation for the guaranteed maximum price, which is $7,111,000. It's $700, and that is, keeps us within budget, and when we're ready to go. So I have a number of experts, or consultants here tonight, experts as well, who are ready to answer questions, or I can, if you have any. But that's where we're at.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
Not on this.
None, nobody? Then I entertain a motion.
We have a, sorry, citizen comment on this one.
Oh, okay. Doesn't matter.
Good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. My name is Kimberly Walsh, and I live in Oregon City, just a couple blocks from the library. Groundbreaking for the new library addition is about to begin. Many people have worked many hours on the planning for this new construction. As you know, I've not been in support of this project from the beginning. However, I love the library and support the library and agree that Oregon City does need a bigger facility. I have, though, been concerned about the impact to the neighborhood and the park. I'm not the only one with concerns. The McLaughlin Neighborhood Association and many other neighbors have voiced their objections, suggestions, and opinions. The Carnegie Library building is unique because it sits in the middle of a Oregon City park. It is not just surrounded by land. Library Park is a well-used, loved playground and green space. From the very beginning of this project, the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association has asked that the addition to the library disturb the park as little as possible. Last year, the city commission voted on the two-story option because it had the smallest footprint, and at that time, did not alter the playground in any way. Now, the entrance has been moved, more concrete has been added, the playground is being moved, and the park itself has been referred to as not a park, but a civic plaza. It has come to my attention, or, excuse me. So I urge you to review the plans once more and make sure that they fit with your vision for the library and the park. I feel that there are a few more changes that could be made to better preserve the feel of the park and the historic integrity of the site. I emailed you, I emailed each of you a long letter detailing my thoughts, since I knew they ran more than three minutes. To summarize, I am concerned about the amount of concrete, the surface under the playground equipment, the removal of trees, and the placement of the electrical box and the garbage enclosure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment on that, if I could.
Well, we're still, no, we're still, we're in discussion, so comment away.
I guess my question is, we haven't seen the rendering since they've been modified, and they're going to be the groundbreaking, right? So we haven't seen those, and I'm just curious to see those and to see what has been changed and in what direction, if it's still in the same direction.
Not that much has been changed. We've actually added back in more grass around the spray park.
Okay.
So there's less concrete than there was before, but not a lot has changed.
Has the plan substantially changed since the vote?
No.
Okay. Any else? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Let's make the motion.
You want a motion?
So it's been moved and seconded to request proceeded construction and general approval of the guaranteed maximum price for GMP library expansion project. It was moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Mengeleberg. I'm going to have a hard time with that. Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Pauli.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
So I want to follow up with a comment, if I could. So is there, when we do see the plans, the final plans, is there still room for little tweaks and adjustments? I mean, is there more input, or is that it?
Can I answer this?
Yes.
Okay. Because that is a construction manager architect's worst nightmare, is hearing words like that. So I imagine there is some room for some small tweaking, but generally speaking, we're giving them a plan and we're asking them to build it. So we don't want to be, you know, I've been in this position by architects on numerous occasions. We get something all done, and then they come in, they go, "Oh, no, no, we want to change that." But they want to do it for free. Well, that's not how this works. So I think the plans that we have submitted and the final whatever we're going to see is going to be 99% it. Did I cover your bases?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's important that everybody understands that and understands the process of that.
Right. At some point, you have to say, "This is it." And we've, it's not as if this has not been a long, drawn-out, more-than-inclusive process with huge amounts of civic engagement all along the way. So, you know, I know I heard the presentation at least 12 times. So, anybody else?
If I can make Commissioner Pauli comfortable, I've kind of sat through this whole project and down to the light bulbs. And I think with the amount of people that have been on this committee and the number of times we've gone out into the neighborhood and had these discussions and stuff, I just want to make sure you're comfortable that this is actually in the best interest and it's the best design, the best project that we're going to be able to do. In fact, I think it's a nice template for the other projects that are kind of, the city's going to be involved with. We've proved that now. We've gone out into the neighborhoods. Instead of saying, "Hey, we're going to have a meeting here at City Hall Monday night. Everybody come and look at this project. You know, this is your chance." But now, we go out in the neighborhood and we reach out, and I think this is where this is, it's been a great experience for doing that. So, and so it's going to set the template for other projects. So just, I hope you're okay with that. So it's.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm very comfortable with the process. And I know that there's been great outreach, and I know there's been a lot of collaboration. There's been a lot of compromise on everybody's end. So I respect that. It's just not seeing the plans, not seeing the final plans until the groundbreaking is kind of, I don't think I've dealt with that before, so that's different. But I, you've done a great outreach, great process, so.
Well, I can say they haven't substantially changed since the last ones that you saw, except for the addition of actually more grass.
Okay.
And facing the slide, a little bit different orientation and dealing with the playground stuff according to what we've worked through with PrAC and the neighborhood.
Well, I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking. It's exciting time for the city. And the library, really, this is to bring the whole community together, and I know it will, so it's good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we are removing Item 8A from the consent agenda, and I'm going to give this to, to the city manager first.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just want to address some of the concerns and.
You guys.
And actually, I apologize to Mr. LaSalle if he, if he perceives this as hiding something. Is it typically how we do budget adjustments? I did send each of you a pretty detailed email about the position, so, but Mr. LaSalle would not have known that, so my apologies to you for that. But I can share most of what I wrote here. It's also important to know that, at the time we did the budget process, we knew fully well that the city had evolved to a place where we need a position like this. This is not intended to be a neighborhood coordinator position in the sense of the position that was previously here at the city. Although I do expect that the position will help with neighborhood activities and coordinating information, we're also still in the process of developing job descriptions. We've reached out to Lake Oswego, City of Wilsonville, and Beaverton regarding similar positions. We found out just this week, I got a whole packet of information from Wilsonville, had a long conversation with their city manager. They have actually a department head position that does this, and then two subordinate positions, mid-level positions. We're not contemplating anything as robust as that, although I think that's envious that they have that kind of talent on their staff. We're just not ready to make that kind of a leap, so this is sort of a small step. We also have found that we get quite a few comments from citizens about information and good things the city's doing, and sometimes controversial things that are happening, but asking us, "I would have liked to seen this sooner, I would like to see more information." And we are sort of, at this point, a clearinghouse where we use our website and hope people go on there and inform themselves, but we don't really take the initiative to get the message out much beyond that. I've also found myself increasingly in the last two years writing, you know, literally dozens of press releases. Sometimes those press releases and other articles are written by our attorneys. We are, myself and the attorneys are some of the, we are the city's most expensive employees, and we're doing a job that, for most people in business, they would not hire the most expensive person they could find to do a job if they could get it done for half that price. So we just don't think it's an efficient use of executive time to have them, you know, us doing those particular things. And even at that, it's only when we have the time to do it, which is increasingly rare for me. The other thing about the budget process, normally we would talk about a new position like this in the budget process, and I think we mentioned it in passing, but we didn't go any further than that because we had a lawsuit facing us from Clackamas County that was $200,000 and a little more. And we did not have a resolution until just a few weeks ago of what that lawsuit, what the result was going to be. And we thought it would be sort of foolhardy to suggest to you spending that money, committing those resources, when we knew, that we felt confident that we were going to prevail in that suit, but we didn't know for sure. And we thought it would be more responsible to wait until we knew that. We also have found out that we've tried to backfill this need. Last year, we spent a fair amount, 25,000 to 35,000, on a PR consultant. We have departments in our city that have a PIO, like our police department, but we don't have any similar position like that for the city.
PIO, Public Information Officer.
Yes, Public Information Officer. So we're going to blend this description and basically try to get one person to do most of the things that the Wilsonville scheme does. For example, there they have a, the state lobbying director who basically spends quite a bit of time in Salem. We're not going to have our person spending time in Salem. We're going to have him spending time here in our region. That person also attends a lot of the regional meetings that the city manager there simply can't get to. And Mayor, you and I try to split those up, and even at that, we're, we're hitting about half of them.
Right.
And so that means things happen in the region. We simply have to react to them because we don't know what's going on. So that's another benefit that we think will be important. I mentioned contractors that we've hired in the past. Last year, we hired a contractor to help us with some of this messaging, and we spent about $30,000, and we realized that not only the issue is complex and complicated, but they're, they're particularly local in some of the issues that we're having. For example, with the Tri-City Sewer District governance, which, you know, these are complex issues. It's taken, it took me at least a year to figure out, connect all the dots from information that I was receiving about Tri-City and its structure. Some of that baseline information I got from council members, like Commissioner Smith and former Commissioner Nacita and others, trying to help me understand, how did Tri-City even become an entity? And after a year, I finally figured that out. Well, so you can imagine if you hire a contractor for a public relations firm and you have them come to City Hall and say, "Here's the file, and it's this big," most of your build time is going to be for them to get familiar with the issues. So the more we contemplated what to do, it kept coming back to, "We need an employee who's available." We also have some talented people that work for us part-time as lobbyists. They don't live in the city, so there's a lot of travel time that we spend money on, and they come here, they know the issue, but we need them in Salem. We either need them in Salem or we need them in this building. We don't need them in Bend. And so that's, that's another factor. I can also tell you that we are developing plans for the position, but we don't have those terribly refined. We're pretty sure it's going to be assigned in the city recorder's office. Katie can tell you a little bit about her planning because she's starting to put together a program for this position. But again, we're not locked down on all the criteria yet. We want somebody really talented who can hit the ground running and get a lot done for us. And as we think about more complex projects like Willamette Falls Legacy Project, a potential Rossman II at the landfill, the Cove, these are big monumental projects that we're kind of concerned frankly that, I think we've done a great job with Willamette Falls because we've had outside consultants drilling down on just that project. But these other big projects don't have that luxury. And we don't have PR folks from Metro, which has a large contingent of them. We won't have those at our disposal on those other projects. So it feels to me like we're behind the curve on filling this position. Our intention would probably be to backfill for the first few months because it's going to take five or six months to find, I think, to do a proper search. During that pendency of five or six months, we probably will hire a contractor to do some of the work that we're dealing with right now. And then when that's, when we get the position on board and get them up to speed on all the issues, then we'll be able to use them more exclusively and not have to worry about hiring contractors. So Katie, would you like to say a few things?
Yeah, if you don't mind. I think one important thing that we need to remember is that because Oregon City has been so understaffed for so long that it feels like we're always trying to play catch-up. We're always behind the ball. We're always reacting instead of being proactive. So bringing someone on to do strictly media relations or get communications out there is really important. Just right now, they're going to be doing a lot of backlog and just trying to do what we're doing now, just playing catch-up with all of this stuff. But once we get the catch-up all done, then we're hoping to be more proactive in our communications, going out there and, you know, explaining the great things that the city is doing. Do more brochures, do more standardization in our press releases. Have it come from one office instead of, you know, one office sending one press release and then having another one send another one that has, you know, some of the same information, but all of it not knowing that the other office had sent that. I think one great example, or, I don't know if I, I don't want to pick on John, but I think one example would be, when we had quite a few issues come forward from the citizens about the sidewalk and the sidewalk issues, his department scrambled and did a wonderful job, actually, but to come up with a brochure that explained sidewalk and sidewalk maintenance and care and how this all worked, well, if we would have had that communications person onboard, we would have been way ahead of the game in getting that prepared in advance as soon as we heard the first thing come in about needing more communication about sidewalks and how those work, we would have had that out the door before you even heard about it. And unfortunately, that's not the way it works because we're, we don't have that person to do those things for us.
And last but not least, the Clackamas County, for example, has a pretty strong presence in social media, Twitter and Facebook and other places. And so we find that we are simply, we have some departments that do have some talented folks in them that are doing this sort of piecemeal. The city, again, does not have a presence there that we are proud of. We hope to, to make that much more robust if we are able to get this position. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I just want to make a comment or two. So over the last three or four months, we've really been knee-deep in this Tri-City Sewer District issue, and, you know, letters have gone back and forth. And I know that it takes myself and Mr. Fraser and Katie and I'm not sure who else, because all this stuff has to get written, has to get vetted by the attorney, you know, there's, there are a lot of things that happen. So if we have one person who's doing this kind of stuff, one, he's on the same, he or she is on the same page and understands what our political positions are from, from the very beginning. And then there is one person that all communications flows through. So we aren't sending mixed messages because John Lewis, you know, ran off the rails and sent something out the door that maybe somebody didn't get a chance to vet, or, you know, Tony Cockle or somebody else. I mean, things happen. And if, instead of it having to all filter through David, this can filter through this person who is not a senior manager. And then if they have questions, and we expect that this person is going to be very professional, and we're going to hire the best person that we can get for the money, and so they're going to understand what is okay to go and what I'm going to have to have vetted by the city manager or the mayor before we send it out the door. So that's going to save a lot of time and energy from all of our senior staff folks. And then there's the, there's a thing about, about the legislature as well. We had several key issues in the legislature this year, and I went down and testified several times. But having a person in the building is an important function because you have to have somebody that's in the building all the time that understands, you know, all the different relationships between the different House members and different Senate members and who the right guy is to talk to about this, that, or the other thing. So this person isn't going to be doing that, but it's the day-to-day communications between our lobbyists in Salem and this guy, and establishing that communication link so it isn't eating up so much more of our senior staff's time. So those are just a couple of the reasons why. And to be honest, we're, Wyatt, if you had to estimate, what are we spending now doing the job that this person should be doing?
That might be insulting to our city attorney, Bill Kabeizman. If our attorneys spend a lot of time on it, probably double what would be. And I think, more importantly, in the dollar, and I'm sorry, Bill, you're at a very good discount for the city. But I think you, you hit it on the head. More importantly is the staff time that goes into it, so maybe even quadruple. And if I could just add, I think, you know, I came from a city before, this one's a lot better, I'm happy to be here, but where there was a presence in the communication piece between the citizens and the city, and it was so helpful, it was so rewarding to be able to share the information that we do. Remember that Oregon City's in such a unique time of growth, and we've got all these special products, projects, Willamette Falls, sewer, water infrastructure, all these things that are happening. And it's a, really a partnership between the citizens, the commission, and the staff working together to accomplish things. And I think that internally, we know that being able to communicate more back out to the citizens, I'm sorry, is going to help us out to be able to accomplish all these things that you want to do, so. And also, I want to apologize, sometimes I get kind of concise with my staff reports, knowing the volume of information that goes across that you have to review, so that might have been part of it, too.
Well, it meets goal number four, and I, we do need that point person to funnel all this through, and it'll make everybody else more productive because they won't be spending time on it. So makes sense to me.
I think with social media and the fast news cycle, our citizens have a higher and more sophisticated desire to know what's going on now in real time and in detail. And so for the city to be able to meet that increasing need, increasing desire, having someone that knows how to use all these various platforms, has good relationships with the media, has a deep understanding of the various projects and programs that the city has going on, and can explain it in layman's terms, which is not so easy to do, is going to be a great addition to the city. We've got so much going on, we have a great story to tell. And when businesses or investors or people that are looking to move to Oregon City and they're not familiar with it, they look at the media, they look at Facebook, they look at the newspaper articles, and that's how they judge whether this is a great town that they want to sink roots into. So if we have a positive presence on our website, current information, great press releases, good coverage in the newspaper, it all helps on the economic development front as well.
Any else? I just have one last comment, and that is that while Mr. Fraser brings these things to us, he is not, he is the city administrator and may create new positions and may hire people at will. The only employees that we have are the city manager and municipal court judge. So while we have such a relationship between the city commission and Mr. Fraser that we have these discussions, he isn't necessarily required to do that, so I just wanted to make that point as well. So if we're done with this, yes?
Yes.
I move to approve 15-141, Resolution Number 15-25, adjustments to the 2015-17 BIM budget.
I second.
Okay. Bob, did you say, you had something to say on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I didn't see.
Well, I'm glad you reinforced my thought, reinforced my thought that this would be a good position because I think the city does deserve their own personal bragging.
Yay.
But, you know, getting back to the part that was in the budget adjustments, pardon me, Wyatt, but that usually isn't a very exciting subject. And so I thought it was kind of hidden, but this looks great. Thanks for your explanation.
Sure.
Thanks, Bob.
Call roll.
Oh, is that just for this? Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mankelberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay, before we move on.
My screen has gone out, so you're not going to notice my room.
Push the button.
Hey, dude.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay. So I am pulling item 8D as well, at least to talk about for a minute, because I would be a total and complete hypocrite, given my opposition to the end of the Oregon Trail Center more than 20 years ago, because it took away Kelly Field and Harbaugh Field and Kelly Field. And I was hanging my hat on Section 40. So we're going to have to have a chat about this. I was not, I guess I should have been, but was not aware that the area that we were talking about for the Public Works Facility is inside currently a public park, if that's the description. So we're going to pull it off the agenda. We're going to open 15-432, and Mr. Kibysman is chomping at the bit, so.
No, chomping at the bit. This is the first, it's been raised, so I haven't had a great amount of time to look at it. But certainly the fact that it was zoned as parks doesn't mean that the city is designated as a park. If you look at what the charter says, real property owned or acquired by the city in other matters may be designated as a park by ordinance.
Except in Section E of Section 42, the area known as Waterboard Park is fairly thoroughly designated.
Right. And, you know, and I'm looking for that.
Hey, Bill.
Yeah.
Real quick. So if you, on Section E, if you read the entirety of the description for Waterboard Park, it includes area adjoining lying below the High Bluff, the westerly end of which area is at the south westerly corner of Track 19 Fields Edition, the easterly end of which area is approximately at the intersection of Quarry and Third Streets, except any portion thereof lying north of the road, running from John Adams Street, and the extension thereof around the south side of the Armory and connecting to South Second Street. We went through this quite a bit. What was the master plan, '09-ish?
Yeah, you reminded me of that. I don't remember this issue much, but I think Nancy Crusher and you worked on it quite a bit. Is there a map that lists that, that can show me in something that's big enough I can see what this description looks like?
We would, we would have to bring that back to you.
We have the GIS people that can do that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then I guess, I need to see that. I'm not sure that that has anything to do with this actual personal services agreement.
I think what I heard was not that you can't do this, as much as, don't spend this money on a master plan for an area that you can't later do it. So this is one step further down the road, and, you know, and that was what I heard.
It could be a larger park.
We'd be happy to bring it back. I just hope we don't have to vacate the site. But, you know, we'd be happy to bring it back next meeting with the, with documentation.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
I guess I would just point out, what I just said a second ago, is that purchasing this property is not necessarily tied to.
No, this isn't the purchase of the property. This is the, this is the personal services agreement for the updated master plan.
Oh.
For the Public Works Operations Center.
Okay.
Is there going to be any issue with the contractor if we wait two weeks?
No.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to, that's a question. Mr. Boss?
Sorry, this is just me maintaining my personal credibility. So I want to make sure that I'm clear about what I was saying, what I was not saying. So the legal description down below, I'm with Tony. I do think that's fairly clear about excluding the upper yard. I don't want to come back later and say, you know, Jesse steered us wrong. I think the legal description is pretty clear. But what I am saying is that these maps adopted by ordinance have a different legal description associated with them that's not written out in words. So I just don't want to say that I was saying that the Waterboard Park description matches up with the current park. Does that make any sense?
No.
Okay.
Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, my controlling document is the Constitution of the City of Oregon City, and that piece, that Section E right there, that's what really matters to me.
Mayor, I think, if I can, you're right, 42 sets out 12 specific things that are parks, where you can't do certain things. Section 43 says, in addition to the 12, additional parks may be created and subject to this. I believe what he's saying is when the city zoned this as park, it's not just Waterboard Park, but it's additional area beyond the boundaries set in 42. And that therefore meant that that's now, that area is now subject to the limitations in the charter.
Okay. So at the end of the day, I need to see a map. Because, you know.
It's not going to be a map. It's about what is the effect of these documents? Did zoning that area a park designated a park under the charter?
Was it public property when the zoning was done?
Don't know. But the more important thing is, there are lots of things that are zoned for certain things that aren't that thing.
Right.
And so the fact that you happen to zone an area for parks doesn't designate it as a park. What you've done in the, what the city commission's done in the past to designate a park is adopt a master plan, is to say this area is now dedicated as a park. And the question that you, that's been raised is, does zoning an area as a park qualifies designated it under the charter?
I'd like to hear from our planning director on this.
Well, this is, first, this has been brought up, so I guess I'd prefer to have, bring it back in two weeks and be able to give you a comprehensive response rather than.
Okay.
It's right here.
All right. Thanks for looking into it.
So with the commission's permission, we're going to move this to a date certain of August 18th, I think?
Nine plus fourteen, nineteen.
Nineteen?
Yeah. It's the 19th.
August 19th. So if everybody's in concurrence, then we'll move on.
So if I could, before we leave this item, Mayor Holliday, is if somebody has also an interest in the scope of work that this contract was going to be for, they need to bring that to our attention, too, if they think that needs to be different. Okay? Any additions or something?
Okay. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I move to approve as amended.
Second.
Guys, kill me. Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mankelberg?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Oh, my gosh. So now we're on to, on to communications. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start tonight by asking Public Works Director John Lewis to provide you with a short update on our sewer moratorium projects.
Katie, you're going to pull down the screen for me for that?
I am. I'm going to pull down the screen for you.
Well, I think they thought I was going to see.
Well, that's a big deal. We've been talking about it for a while, but like I said, I hung my hat in that thing for a little time. I can't turn it on.
So I know there's interest in progress on our sewer moratorium projects, so I wanted to share a little bit of an update with you on that. So I've got three exhibits that I'm going to just show you. So we have been making great progress on our moratorium areas. This area is in the McLaughlin neighborhood, stretches up towards the hospital. If you remember, this is our priority one area, mostly because of the improvements that was planned under the hospital master plan. So the 12th Street Improvement, which is at the top of the map, or near the top of the map, is under construction as of, well, this last week, that contractor started, was given notice of proceeding. They're down there Friday night. You'll, might want to avoid the intersection of Main and 12th because they're going to be right in the middle of that intersection. So find a different route. But we're making progress on upgrading the pipe size for that. The other project that's out to bid right now is the Madison and 14th Street Project. It's scheduled to open on August 12th. It'll be the remainder of the piping improvements in that basin or in that particular moratorium area. And as we complete each one of these projects, we'll, we'll bring that back with the help of our attorney to raise those moratorium areas. Actually, that 12th Street one raises, provides for quite a bit of space, or quite a bit of existing development that would be if it wanted to, if there was some new development in that basin that we'd be able to lift and allow to happen. So making good progress on it. So next slide, please. This isn't a moratorium area, but it's one of those moratorium areas that could have been. We had a pump station problem with Settlers Point Pump Station, and so this was actually a project that we also identified as part of the moratorium projects, but we didn't actually form a moratorium. So that Settlers Point Pump Station, as of just yesterday, I believe, was deemed substantially complete. The pump station's up and running. If you remember, there was a developer who helped fund this project. And we are, we, I saw, I signed the request for reimbursement for that developer. So we're going to be able to both pay it under this year's budget, and we were able to complete a bunch of the work under last year's budget. So again, I feel like that's another step in the right direction for our sewer moratorium kinds of projects. And the last slide is the projects along Lynn Avenue and Hazelwood. Both of those projects are secondary to the initial effort. But we have started negotiations with the consultant and some scoping with the consultant on the Lynn Avenue project. It's aligned with the Lynn Avenue Corridor. It's, it's just off the edge of pavement in Lynn, along Lynn Avenue. So we want to be coordinating that with, it goes through the intersection of Pearl. So if you remember with the corridor plan, there was a lot of suggestions in that area that we might try to implement with road winding. I don't know that we can put all those under this one project, but if, if there's an opportunity there, we'd like to do that. Things like, you know, the corridor plan had retaining walls, and this, this pipeline's kind of precariously located in a, in a place that might conflict with a future retaining wall. So we want to make sure we get those things right. So we're, we're starting that process now, even though that's ahead of schedule, ahead of what we committed to, we're going to go ahead and start that. The Hazelwood Improvement Project is the, the last project that we committed to doing. And other than recognizing that it's still an important project, we haven't really taken much on. We're expecting to do that in 2016 with construction in 2017. So I would say we're ahead of what we committed to getting to. We're trying to deliver those projects cost-effectively. And I think it's a good update. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Just compliments for your progress and appreciate that you're focusing on this issue. It's really important to the city.
So the next topic I have is to talk a little bit about Tri-City. There's been an invitation that I received late this afternoon from the county administrator. Some of you will recall back in December, when Mayor Neely was still serving, the city sent a letter to Clackamas County asking the Board of County Commissioners to engage with you on potential changes in governance. And then after Mayor Holliday came aboard in January, he sent another letter to them, to which we didn't receive a response to either letter. And then eventually that led to issuing a plea to our local state representative to have House Bill 2800 authorize a discussion on governance changes. And so once, once that legislative bill hit the floor, then we did seem to get some, some response. But it wasn't, let's sit down and talk about governance. And it, and it kind of later evolved into that in this, this rather large animal called a Regional Wastewater Advisory Capacity Committee. That, Mayor Holliday is a member of that committee. Well, the county, their indication to us was that we want to have, we'll discuss governance with you, but it has to be at that group. And so I don't really know that we agreed, but we showed up. And I'll let Mayor Holliday and Commissioner President Polly fill you in on more of the details of what happened there. But there seems to have been yet another shift in how this process is supposed to work because maybe they didn't like, I'm not sure they liked very much, some of the input that Oregon City and Gladstone provided them, but at the Regional Wastewater Capacity Advisory Committee meeting last week. And so then late this afternoon, I received an email from County Administrator Don Krupp. And in the email, Don says, I received a communication from Chris Jordan, who's this city manager in West Lynn, letting me know that some members of the West Lynn City Council were asking if the city commissioners would be, or the county commissioners would be willing to convene a joint meeting of the full membership of Gladstone City Council, West Lynn City Councils, Oregon City Commission, and the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners to discuss TCSD. And then he shared this with his board. He says, I shared this with the Board of County Commissioners yesterday, and they agreed that such a meeting would be productive. They asked for our staff to begin working on putting just the details together, perhaps in September. I'm checking with each of you. And this is an email to me and to the current city administrator of Gladstone, Ross Schultz. And he's asking David and Ross what we think. And he says, I'm checking to see with each of you to find out if you think your councilors or commissioners would be interested and willing to participate in a joint meeting for all our jurisdictions. Now, we had our right-of-way coordinator, Lance Pallison, right-of-way manager, excuse me, attend the meeting, and Lance gave me a summary of that. And at the meeting, I think one of the things that was emphasized was that the, that the county staff would create the agenda, the county board would host it at the county's offices, and that the, there's no clear, clear information to me about what the decision-making process would be, what your dates are. I'm not sure how Gladstone and West Lynn are going to cope with this, but I know for you, you adopt your commission meeting calendar a year in advance. And, and even with that, sometimes it's hard to get everybody together on our meeting nights. So hopefully they'll provide a good deal of flexibility in those dates to try to get all these folks together. I've not seen this large of a meeting. We're going to need space for 30-some odd people if we actually pull that off.
Well, 50 if you include county staff.
Yeah. So I'm just sort of surprised, I guess, by this, but I wanted to get the commission's feedback and some directions, some thoughts, concerns. And I'll try to get more information than what we have right now because it is a fairly short message.
If you don't mind, I'll go first, since I've been the point man on this deal and to some extent, Brian and Carol have backed me up. But the city commission, I believe, is united in this position. So, and Gladstone last week passed a resolution unanimously united in this position that we need governance change at Tri-Cities. So this looks like to be another one of Commissioner Savis and Ledlow's solution-by-dilution techniques, where they now can put 40 people in a room, and we can have this big, long conversation and go nowhere. And to be honest, I have enough meetings that I go to that go nowhere that I don't need to have another one on my schedule. And from the standpoint of the politics of the situation, West Lynn is split 2-2. So until November, and they have their election, I think that having a meeting like this with all of the county commissioners and all of the Gladstone City Councilors and all of the Oregon City Commissioners and all of the councillors from West Lynn, who theoretically are going to be split 2-2 and aren't going to be able to make a decision anyway, is really just a waste of time. We have had more than enough discussions with the county for them to understand what our position is. And I don't think our position's going to change. We need the three cities to have the control and the authority over the Tri-City Service District. And because 97-point-something percent of the rate payers inside Tri-Cities reside in one of the three cities. And the people who run that district ought to be politically accountable to the places where that, that they're setting rates for. So two people from West Lynn, two people from Gladstone, two people from Oregon City makes up the board. It sits just like South Fork, where you can't pass anything without at least one affirmative vote from each of the three cities. That model's worked for 100 years in South Fork. In fact, we're celebrating our 100th anniversary this year. So I'm not sure why Clackamas County is digging in their heels so much, other than the fact that they're hoping that we're all going to bury our heads in the sand and pretend like Tri-City Service District isn't supporting and what's subsidizing growth in northeast Clackamas County, which I believe we are.
Mayor, I will also add that Mr. Krupp indicates that perhaps September would be an, an an option for some dates. I think for you, that's going to, I just think, if I look at our city recorder, we're going to have some big challenges getting this done that fast. And I mean, if it was a bona fide emergency, I'm sure all of you could make exceptions, but it's going to be a challenge. That said, I believe you also have another Regional Wastewater Capacity Advisory Committee meeting scheduled for September. That rolled off fairly good that time.
Yeah.
I think that's coming up in September as well. And my recollection from being an observer at that last meeting that was that a representative from Milwaukee was concerned about maybe getting a longer-term agreement from Tri-City for their solids handling, which seemed reasonable to me. And then, a representative from Happy Valley was concerned about stability in the long term. And so, we were planning, Mr. Mayor, I think you can recall this with me, but we were, my understanding was that Oregon City was supposed to bring back something, because with greater detail in it, a proposal that was something in writing, because Mr. Holfeld, who represented the unincorporated area, said, "I need something in writing." So, we've had our staff already start working on things in writing that you can take with you and present to that group. So, I just think, pick a form, I really don't care which form it is, but we ought to try to pick a form and utilize it. But, either way, we will be ready sometime in September when that next meeting is, so that you can have that information. I'm not sure yet how you want me to respond to Mr. Krupp, but I think I know how the mayor feels. So, I'd like to hear from the rest of you if you have opinions about it.
The mayor couldn't have said it better. I mean, I agree with everything he said. I just...
We are recording this, right?
We are, yes.
Which is Tri-Cities.
As you know, I've been frustrated this since 2008, when I was elected. Unfortunately, I was a minority on the commission at the time when we got involved in the agreement that we're still talking about today. It was a big mistake. And, you know, so this is not a new topic. And for the county to now want to, you know, have a frantic meeting really quick and all this stuff, they haven't rushed at all in the last, how many years? We're completely firm where we're at, I think, as a commission. And I think exactly what the mayor said, this is a way to get us all together and start breaking those ties, and that isn't going to happen. I hope not from Oregon City, and I hope not from Gladstone. So, I think we just keep moving forward.
Commissioner Megelberg, you got anything?
Nope. I support the position of the city.
Okay. Mr. Pauli?
At the last meeting, I saw some aha moments from the other cities, and I really do feel the cities are saying, "We want to take the lead in our urban services," and that they're understanding that, you know, these impact our cities, it's the Tri-Cities, and we need to have a voice. And so, I feel like there's been a big leap in that area. So, that's where, I think we're ready to get together now and discuss it.
I'm curious about why now they want to have this meeting. They could have done this even back in Rocky's day.
Well, can I answer that question?
Sure, sure.
The reason they want to do this now is because they see that Gladstone is now on board, Oregon City is completely united, and the only real opportunity they have is to somehow break West Lynn apart. And so, you know, I have no idea how the election's going to go in West Lynn, but one side or the other is going to get their third vote, and that will determine which way West Lynn falls on this issue. But, in the meantime, we have seventy percent or more of the ratepayers, just between Gladstone and Oregon City. So, there are other means by which we can get to this point, and I think the county is now nervous that, you know, they, going into this, you know, when I first, when we first came on board, that they kind of figured that Oregon City was kind of, you know, out here as a little orphan child, and they could just continue to ignore us. Well, instead of doing that, we started actually talking to our neighbors and getting to know the mayors from different places and going to the Clackamas Cities dinners and all that and having these discussions. And it was through that patient delivery of information and gaining relationships with those people that we brought Gladstone on board. So, now the county is seeing, instead of, because their process has been, over the last years, to break this, keep the cities apart, keep the information separate, so that nobody really knew what everybody else, and then they could say that, "Well, jeez, all the other cities are happy except for Cambie," or, "All the other cities are happy except for Oregon City, Oregon City." Well, now they're finding that we're talking to each other. And when we talk to each other, then we can go, "Well, okay, maybe this particular issue that Cambie has has no effect on Oregon City, but I'm going to stand with Mayor Hodson, because we're neighbors. And when I need that support, then he's going to stand with me." So, I think this is the situation where we're changing. Cities should do city stuff. The county should do county stuff, and the two things pretty much shouldn't meet each other. So, the county's building cities inside the urban growth boundary that will never be cities, because once you build those developments, there's no incentive for those people who already have water, already have sewer, and already have county police. There's no reason for them to annex into a city like Happy Valley, because they're already getting all their services at a lower rate. So, you're just building more islands that aren't being governed by the people that actually live there. It's the same situation you have in Oak Grove and Jennings Lodge, where they're, I don't know if you guys know about this, but the old evangelical center is down there. And, I mean, I grew up there, so I understand. It's a big place, got a huge amount of old trees, all this stuff. But, at the end of the day, it's in the county, and so, these people are screaming mad that they're going to sell this and they're going to build a subdivision. But, there's nothing those people, in reality, can do, because their mayor and city council is the Clackamas County Commission. And they have no real political pull, because even if they all got together and decided to vote all of them out, it wouldn't amount to one percent of the entire electorate of Clackamas County. So, this is not the way to make urban things work. Cities should be governed by their local candidates, who are elected and unelected by their citizens, depending on whether they think they're doing a good job or not.
And Mayor, one of the more difficult things, too, is when we talk about regionalization, which I think is a topic that's really interesting down the road, is Commissioner Pauli mentioned at that meeting, it's important to Oregon City to get our house in order at Tri-City and make sure that foundation is solid before we try to build a much bigger house on a foundation that we know for sure is not where we want it to be today. But, the difficulty of having the county be the operator, the orchestrator, the agenda setter, the information provider, the decision-maker for all of these, is that all of these intergovernmental agreements that all get negotiated among all these cities, only one party is actually doing the negotiating. And so, that really means that every participant is not very well-served or really sincerely represented without some other ulterior motive that comes to play. And I think it's an impossible situation for the county to have put itself in. And if I were there, I would be fleeing from this problem with enthusiasm, trying to say, "Cities, you want to run yours government? We understand that. We would like to represent our unincorporated citizens, as we're elected to do, but we thank you, and here you go." You know, and I would really like to be able to talk about a long-term, you know, a shorter-term transition plan, because they have some talented folks at West, that we, you know, some people that we'd like to work with and try to work this out as far as the day-to-day operations. But, I will say that this is my third county seat where I've been a manager. Virtually, every city I've been in besides this one had some sort of sewer plant the city ran. It's not rocket science. When you talk to a treatment operator or an engineer, you can certainly get your eyes glazed over with, you know, different kind of screening materials and ultraviolet treatment, and this bug and that bug, and settling tanks and lime silos and all the rest. But, at the end of the day, it's a sophisticated composting operation, and it's not rocket science.
Fundamentally, the technology has not changed in fifty or sixty years beyond some minor tweaking in technology.
Well, there's been some really great advancements in technology, and in grants past, we used some of that technology when I was there to develop a fertilizer product that was really a big seller. We made money on it. We didn't haul it all the way to eastern Oregon and imply it on someone's cornfield. We put it in bags and sold it at Costco. And it was great at growing flowers and grass and anything people wanted to grow. And we use some of those technologies, and they're available here today. I'm sure the West is well-aware and probably even has used some of these techniques, but there are lots of opportunities. I guess what I'm trying to tell you is, we're not afraid of the responsibility. This is simply another division of a public works department, and probably, if you look across the country, the vast majority of cities have experience operating sewer plants, and they do it on a day-to-day basis without any incident. So, it's just one more thing that governments do, but it's not that difficult.
And just to kind of cap that up again, back to that aha moment, I think the three cities realize that we need to be voting for things that affect our cities, and we need to be signing the IDAs. And it's our responsibility to know what's going on with our city's services. And there's been too many surprises to us, the things that have gone on and things that have not gone right, and not knowing the ins and the outs. And it's time that we know that and take charge, represent our citizens, so.
I think I understand what to do. I'll develop a response for Mr. Krupp.
And we had nothing to say about any of that.
And then, just to close, I just want to thank you all for taking the time to be so thoughtful in giving this certificate to me. It's the first one, and maybe I'll get another one one day, but I really appreciate it. It's a privilege to serve you.
Great. So, anybody on the commission? Mr. Shaw?
Let's see. Went to the volunteer dinner concert last Thursday night. It was pretty nice. Get a little recognition there and that. Also, was involved with the 5K in First City Celebration, and I think that went really well. And the rain came on at appropriate time later in the day, so. And then, went to, just to kind of support our neighbors, I went to Clackamas Days on Sunday to see their festivities over there, and they had a great show over there. So, Scott Archer and I met with Jerry Herman, and we met with some consultants from the, I think it's the North Harbor Fund, if I remember right, Scott. And we're investigating whether there's some monies available to do some mitigation slash dredgings slash boat ramp, because evidently, this fund has a bit of money available. And they're looking for projects. Gladstone has probably around a couple million dollars coming into them right now in projects, and I think it's something we need to investigate. So, that's what we're doing. And then, went to the tree appreciation Monday night over here at the Carnegie. So, Mo, great job putting that on. That was really nice. And surprising, some of the artwork, I noticed Commissioner Pauli's kids there, and that was really impressive how they are able to get the impressions off of the trees and stuff. So, anyway, that's it.
Commissioner Megelberg?
I attended the Metro, what is it called, Policy Advisory Committee of Metro. I'm newly appointed to that role on behalf of the city. A couple weeks ago, at Milwaukee, we did a walking tour of downtown Milwaukee. It's coming right along, especially seeing how light rail is impacting downtown. They've done a beautiful job with the landscaping and the design and the artwork. It's impressive. Also, they are starting a lecture circuit, and so, they're bringing people from outside of the region to talk about best practices. They had a presenter talking about how to evaluate development, and he made a very compelling case for assessing things by an acre footprint. And when you look at it at land that way, the investment and the jobs per acre and the cost of providing utilities looks completely different. When you look at, say, a proposed big-box development, the numbers may seem in the millions, and they are, but they're over a big piece of land. Whereas, you look at development downtown, that is multiple stories, that has a lot of jobs, the infrastructure's already in place, the investment per acre is much higher. I thought that was an interesting lens to look at projects through and something for the commission to keep in mind as we're evaluating options. I also attended the First City Celebration and the night out last night, a great event at Mount Pleasant, and the Saturday Market, ten-year anniversary. So, lots of great things happening in Oregon City.
Mr. Pauli?
I think all of us were, a lot of us were at the same places. So, just kudos to the involvement of this commission. The farmer's market, tenth anniversary, it was a beautiful day. Lots of people, just really appreciative of what the farmer's market's done for our community. So, ten years goes by quick. First City Celebration, even despite the rain, there was very good attendance. The attendance was up. So, that was good. And addition of the 5K was a great event, and that was the idea, the brainchild of a high school senior.
Vote.
Yeah, Mary Whitman. So, that was neat to see the partnership between that and the Main Street Board and the committee, the 5K committee, to make sure that that was a reality for her. And then, the Oregon City Business Alliance, they had a tourism tsunami information, all about what to do and how to prepare for tourism and working together. So, that was good. And I could go on and on, but I think I will stop at that.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Farmer's Market did that. That was amazing. The Librarians was in town filming, and so, I wanted to mention that. They were filming prior to First City Festival and then a few days after, a couple of days after. And the reason I want to mention that, on Monday, following the First City event, I spent the day as an extra on the set of Librarians, which was really fun. I just kind of wanted to be a part of that and get a perspective of what it takes to bring the production company into town. We've had a lot of production companies in Oregon City doing movies and TV projects, and it's definitely something that the city feels is important, and I think also the county. But, one of the things that I will share is that spending, I was there a ten-hour day as an extra, and I will tell you that during shots downtown Oregon City, I would say every five minutes or so, every couple of minutes, anyone that wanted to walk by on the sidewalk or come by in a wheelchair, they were constantly communicating to the extras and all the staff to stay off the sidewalks, keep this course house steps clear. I've never seen that level of awareness of what was going around just on the basic streets of Oregon City. And I commented to them several times about that. I was very impressed by that, because we know that it does have an effect. And one of the, you know, unique things about Oregon City is we have several very prominent locations in the city that these companies want to continue to use, and it tends to impact the same businesses over and over again. And the more that we can streamline that, and I mean, I know it was an extra chaos with the First City Festival on that same day. It kind of was very difficult. But, I just saw them going out of their way in that aspect of making sure that they were trying to be as little of an impact as possible, and I appreciated that. The, I wanted to thank Jonathan and Downtown and all of the volunteers for the First City Festival event, as we all kind of attended. Incredible. And, you know, we see a lot of events come and go in Oregon City, and to have a new run in Oregon City, this new 5K, which was so exciting and so, it's the first time in a long time we've had a new event that really... long time we've had a new event that really caught people's attention like that. So I'm excited about it and definitely want to see that continue. National Night Out last night, which, again, I think the entire commission was there. Police Department did an incredible job. That event is becoming, you know, a major event for the city and just be able to have a dialogue with the entire community. And if you haven't seen, I comment on this first moment that I drove into the park, the tents. So the police department has new 10-by-10 tents with the police department logo on it, they have signage. It was so professional-looking, it was, I loved it. It just was very, the presence there was important, and the dialogue between all the people that were attending that event, just really exciting. So thank you for that. And that's it. Are you all right?
Yeah, I'm fine. So I went to pretty much everything that everybody else went to, so I won't go through the whole list again. I did spend half an hour, 40 minutes with the, we hosted the Regional Senior Police Officers Get Together at the Abernathy Center last Thursday, and was able to spend some time down there and thank them for their service and welcome them to Oregon City. And apparently, the venue that they were at was pretty impressive because I guess Jim got some comments saying that, you know, it was a great venue for them because they could all get up and walk around and talk to each other, and it really isn't, it's really sort of an informal kind of thing. So that was fun. And then went up to the Regional Wastewater Capacity Advisory Committee meeting and got to have some fun up there, too. As we continue to move along, I've had numerous meetings and phone calls with David and other folks on the tri-city thing, and we'll continue to do that. I do want to say that there is another, this weekend, the Battle for the Bridge in West Lynn, which is the alumni teams from Oregon City and West Lynn recreating the famous rivalry. So that's this Thursday evening around 6:30, if people want to go to that. I and I assume Mayor Axelrod will be flipping the coin for the, whatever that is with football because I don't really watch football. And, let's see.
The Library Groundbreaking.
And Parks Day.
And Parks Day.
Oh, my gosh.
It was the last.
Yeah, it's going to be a very busy week.
Yeah.
And concerts.
Yeah, and the concerts.
So I think that's it for me. I'm meeting with Commissioner Fish from the City of Portland, I'm hoping a week after next, to talk about some things about South Fork and the Regional Water Providers Consortium and trying to continue to build our relationship with the City of Portland, being that they're the 600-pound gorilla in the room. It's always nice to have them not biting our heads off, so. With that, I'm done. Is there anything for the, go to the order?
You are going to, oh, you are going to do the kayak thing.
No, I'm not doing the kayak thing.
Are you?
The kayak thing violates Dan's rule number one, which I don't ride anything that I can't shut off with a key. So, if nobody else has anything else, then Mr. Gifford.
He's going to do the kayak thing, right?
You can't fill out a card like everybody else.
Enthusiasm is amazing. Use a comment on the comments. But the Parks Night is also the kickoff for the movies in the park every Friday in August. So we have movies in the park and encourage people to come out and learn more about their parks at Parks Night. And the Parks, the brand-new Oregon City Parks Foundation will be having a booth there as well.
So that reminds me of one other thing. I did spend some time with the folks from the Librarians. I spent a good amount of time with Roger, their location director. Got an opportunity to meet Jonathan Frakes, who is the director, who most of you will know as the first officer of Star Trek: Next Generation. But just had a really good time talking with those folks and then the guys on the set, and how, one of the things that Roger really talks about in Oregon City is the fact that it is, you know, an all-American main street, and they can get those long shots of real buildings that, you know, that'll fit in a lot of different situations in movies and other kinds of things. And I talked to the Bushes downtown, because I usually park in there a lot because then I don't have to pay the toll. And as I was coming through, they really had some very nice things to say about these guys, too, that they're very good to work with, they're really nice. In fact, a couple of them had come in and bought furniture from the Bushes. So we just want to say thanks to those guys for coming in. Anytime we have something like that that happens in Oregon City, it's going to highlight to the rest of the nation and the world, you know, who we are and be able to utilize screenshots from those things in our, you know, marketing events going forward. So I just think that's a real important thing. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we're going to recess into executive session. Do we anticipate we would have to come back?